If not, we'll move on to conduct of business.
Item nine, conduct of business. Item nine A, receive report on the feasibility analysis for citywide fiber to home upgrade to the San Bruno cable system and provide direction to staff.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council.
City manager.
Over the last several months, the city council has expressed an interest for staff to bring back information that would inform you with respect to an interest among the community for the city to upgrade and update its cable system to provide a state-of-the-art fiber-to-the-home system citywide. As the city council is aware, this, the city has, with it, through its cable operations, has tiptoed into this next frontier in terms of the expansion and evolution of technology by building a fiber-to-the-home network at the Shelter Creek condominium complex, roughly 1,300 units, and currently, the city is in the process of completing a fiber-to-the-home upgrade at the Peninsula Place condominiums and will soon be actively building a similar system at the Crystal Springs Terrace apartment complex. We, we, we put our toe into the fiber-to-the-home technology in these specific locations, as you may recall, because the dense, the dense construction in condominium projects allows us to efficiently build and reach a, a critical mass of subscribers whom we can encourage to utilize our system and/or to upgrade to a faster internet speed that the fiber-to-the-home technology provides. As I indicated, the city council has expressed an interest in exploring a further deployment citywide of fiber-to-the-home, and as this is a very expensive proposition, we asked a industry expert to provide us with a feasibility analysis using Shelter Creek, which has been completed as an opportunity to take a real-life example in our community of the deployment of fiber-to-the-home and to compare results and operations at that location, both during and post-construction of the fiber-to-the-home network, compare that to results that we're receiving elsewhere in the community, not currently served by fiber-to-the-home. As the city council is aware, other providers have increasingly deployed technologies that have provided stiff competition to San Bruno Cable, which enjoyed for the many first years, the first probably three decades of its existence in San Bruno, enjoyed a relatively non-competitive environment. Over the last 10 to 15 years, competition has incrementally increased to the point where we have another provider building fiber-to-the-home as we speak, and that competition is resulting in a significant loss of customers. So taking the Shelter Creek example allowed us to compare what is going on in the rest of the community with the reality of a fiber-to-the-home system under the operation and control of San Bruno Cable. I'm pleased to just, just introduce this presentation tonight by saying that, that analysis has demonstrated, the analysis for which we contracted, has demonstrated a relatively positive result. Our consultant, Steve Blum, is here tonight. Steve is an industry expert with Teles Ventures Associates, who has developed and who utilized a model that allows for a precise financial analysis that produces results that he can represent to you tonight in some detail, that answers the questions that we asked. In other words, using the Shelter Creek example as a test case, what might we expect in the areas of subscriber take, revenue increase, and other metrics? What might we expect on a citywide basis? And what might that allow us to project for a payback period for the roughly $10 million additional investment that would be required to bring fiber to the rest of the San Bruno community? And before I turn the presentation over to Steve, and I'm, I'm sorry, I'm gonna need to ask you, Steve, to introduce yourself with your credentials.
Sure.
Because I'm sorry that I didn't bring your bio with me tonight.
No problem.
The, talking about the $10 million investment, I encourage the council to remember that the, the purpose of tonight's agenda item is to allow you to hear firsthand from Mr. Blum the results of his analysis, for you to ask questions and to engage in any discussion you might like with him. What is specifically not on the agenda tonight is a decision point where this item is not agendized for you to provide a specific decision, a go or no-go with future investment in fiber-to-the-home deployment. Instead, what staff is seeking is your direction regarding any further exploration of this concept and the possibility of this investment in this initiative citywide in San Bruno. I mentioned the cost at approximately $10 million to build the entire rest of the community with fiber-to-the-home, and in mentioning that, I also need to remind the city council that there is a current situation of financial deficit in the San Bruno Cable enterprise that is a business-type operation that, that we operate under the city's umbrella but, but separated from the city's general fund activities. That deficit coincidentally is currently roughly in that same $10 million amount. That deficit accrued over a number of years, approximately 12 years, during which technological advancement and the need for city, for the city's incremental investment did not result in returns to the investment that was necessary in order simply to keep up and to maintain a system that was able to sustain its competitive, to sustain itself within the current competitive environment. We specifically did not ask Mr. Blum to evaluate the deficit or strategies to address the deficit. We asked him strictly to focus on the fiber-to-the-home opportunity and the investment that would be required to deploy fiber. As such, should the city council wish to pursue this concept further, staff would strongly recommend that your direction and your next step would include the interest and the need to hear back from us on a more, a more comprehensive analysis of the financial issues associated with fiber-to-the-home, and specifically how staff might recommend, or what options staff might bring forward and recommend to you to finance a fiber-to-the-home initiative. Jim O'Leary, our interim finance director, is, is here with us tonight and has done some preliminary work on that topic. He's prepared to provide some preliminary information if that's of interest to the city council following Mr. Blum's report, but we, again, we recommend that we do not have detailed analysis for you tonight and would be prepared to bring that back as a subsequent conversation with the city council at a later date, should you have the interest to move forward any further with consideration of fiber-to-the-home. So with that, I'll introduce Mr. Blum, ask him to introduce himself a little bit, and then I, I guess there is one more thing to say, and that is that Mr. Blum provided the results, preliminary results of his analysis to the cable subcommittee of the city council about three weeks ago. This report, should the council's pleasure be to allow Mr. Blum the amount of time it will take to walk through the entire report, and I think you will find it really very interesting, and Mr. Blum's presentation style also very engaging and interesting. Will take roughly 20 minutes, so we, we invite your indulgence to listen to what it will be, a fairly detailed presentation, and certainly this council subcommittee is available to also answer any questions that you might have once the presentation is completed.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Jackson. My name's Steve Blum. My company's Teles Ventures Associates. I'm an independent consultant. I've been working on municipal broadband projects and analysis for the past 15 years. Prior to that, I worked in the satellite industry. I was on the launch team for what is now DirecTV. Back then, it was a consortium of companies, and prior to that, worked in the TV programming, cable, and satellite programming business, and before that, goes back nearly 40 years in the broadcasting industry. I have, have a bachelor's degree from, from Berkeley, master's degree in Japan's, bachelor's degree in history, by the way, I don't want, I'm not an engineer. It's, it's amazing how liberal arts helps you evaluate the world, though. Master's degree in, in Japan Studies and an MBA. The MA is from Washington and the MBA is from University of St. Thomas in Minnesota. And I've worked on a number of municipal broadband and fiber, particularly fiber projects, both here in the Bay Area and, and in Southern California. City of Riverside, Palo Alto, San Leandro are some of the, are some of the cities I've worked with. I've also worked on municipal cable projects, City of Alameda, private communities, and, and similar, similar projects. I guess, in a bad way. As, as Ms. Jackson said, I was asked to do an analysis of the results that you've seen in Shelter Creek since the, since the fiber upgrade was completed, and compare those to the, to the city as a whole, or the rest of the city as a whole. Overall, your revenue, and this is, this is, includes Shelter Creek and everything else in the San Bruno cable system, from 2016 to 2017, your revenue, total revenue increased by about 4%. There were a couple of, a couple of rate increases in that period, over those two years. It, you know, I think that you had two for, two rate increases at about 5%, you averaged those out over the two years. The increase in your revenue isn't quite keeping pace with the, with the rate increases themselves. But there's a comparison, when you, when you break it out into a comparison of Shelter Creek, where you have now a functioning fiber optic system, fiber-to-the-home system, versus the rest of the city, the rest of the city except for Shelter Creek. In the rest of the city, you've got a 3% increase. In Shelter Creek, you have a 13% increase in revenue over that same period. In both the city as a whole and in Shelter Creek, internet service is comprising a greater and greater share of the, of, of your revenue. TV's revenue is, is tapering off in both places. The difference is, is that in Shelter Creek, the shift has been more pronounced. When you break it out into, into the two main components, TV and, and internet, the story starts to become a little bit clearer and, and a little bit starker. In Shelter Creek, it's video revenue, TV subscription revenue, and this is, this doesn't include, this does not include pay-per-views, it's just subscription revenue. Subscription revenue has gone up and down, but on the whole, it is above where it was in January of 2016, about 6% above, and it is generally trending upwards. On the other hand, in the rest of the city, outside of Shelter Creek, video revenue is on a marked downward trend. You can see those two upward ticks in the graph, the green, the green line is the rest of the city. Those two upward ticks are your rate increases, and you, for the video, for the video portion of your business, those rate increases over time have not helped, that you've ended up with less revenue at the end of the year than you had at the beginning of the year, even despite those rate increases. Internet revenue, it's a little bit better story, both in Shelter Creek and the city as a whole, but it's, it is a significantly better story in Shelter Creek. Over the past two years, internet service revenue in Shelter Creek has gone up by about 60%. That's versus about a 20% gain overall in the rest of the city. But what most of that gain in internet revenue, the two big, the two biggest factors, if you look at that graph, are the two, are the two rate increases. If you look at what's happened just in the past six to eight months, though, following the rate increase in August of 2017, you saw revenue in Shelter Creek continue to climb, but revenue, internet revenue in the rest of the city started to taper off. One of the reasons for the increase in internet revenue in Shelter Creek is the higher level of service that the fiber-to-the-home upgrade was able to provide. You have two higher-level packages there that, that are, you know, you charge more for, you deliver faster speeds, and those were not available until your fiber-to-the-home upgrade. You weren't, they were available to some homes, you didn't start charging for them until August. Once that happened, once you started selling those packages, those higher-end packages, they started accounting for an increasing share of the, of the internet service revenue in Shelter Creek. You don't have that revenue at all in the rest of the city. When you compare the average revenue from, from customers in Shelter Creek and the rest of the city, the, rest of the city has a higher, has higher revenue per customer. Your average customer elsewhere in San Bruno pays more, buys more every month from the, from San Bruno Cable than, than in Shelter Creek. But in Shelter Creek, the trend has been, has, in both Shelter Creek and, and the rest of the city, the trend has been reliably upward. So you're, you're selling more to customers, but your revenue is still going down, and the reason for that is, is that in the rest of the city, your market share is dropping. If, in, at the beginning of 2016, January of 2016, in the city outside of Shelter Creek, you had about a 50% market share. That's gradually decreased to about 47% today. On the other hand, in Shelter Creek, during the time that the fiber upgrade was in process, and that upgrade process started around the first of the year in 2017, around January 2017, and in the months leading up to it, you saw a steady increase in, in the, in the number of people who are taking service from San Bruno Cable. You've already, always had more people there taking service. You've always had a higher market share, but your market share in Shelter Creek since the fiber upgrade has increased by about 10%, gone from 60 to 70% roughly, whereas it's, it's on a slow slide in the rest of the city. One of the, and this is, this is the most confusing graph I think I'll have today. It's, it's, it's confusing, but it's, it's also, it's also important. Churn is one of the basic metrics of subscription TV, subscription, any type, type of subscription business. It's basically the measure, the percentage of your customers who leave you every month. There's a certain natural churn in any subscription business, particularly a cable and internet, TV and internet service business. People will move, they'll get new jobs, they'll lose jobs, kids will move out, kids will move in. There's, there's just a natural churn rate out there, and that's usually figured to be somewhere between 1 and 1.5% per month. If you're in the 1% range, you're doing very well. If you're over the 1.5% range, you, you, you have cause to start to worry and ask yourself why. The graph is, jumps all over the place because churn is also seasonal. If you, if you look at the, at where the dips are in the graph, those, those tend to come in the, in the summer months, for example, and summer tends to be a little bit more volatile in terms of people moving in and moving out and changing service. But if you just take the beginning and end of the period, January and February of 2016, and compare it to the last two months of the period, January and February of 2018, you've got a good apples-to-apples comparison there. The two, two months, in those two months, in 2016, Shelter Creek had a 1.6% churn rate. That, you can, you can think, you can think of churn as, as trying to run, run up a downward escalator. You're trying to grow a business, you're trying to stop, you're trying to not lose business. Churn is the force that's pushing back on you. It's, it's the people you, who leave every month that you have to replace just to stay even. In Shelter Creek, in January 2016, that rate was 1.6%, just a little bit over what you would consider to be the natural churn rate. In January, February of 2018, just a couple of months ago, that had dropped to 1% at the bottom end of the natural churn rate. That is, that is a significant change. If you look at the, the trend of those two lines, the green line being the rest of the system and, and the red line being Shelter Creek, over that two-year period, the trend line in Shelter Creek is down, the trend line in the city as a whole is up, and that's a reflection of the take rate, this slide I showed you just before. Overall, you're gaining market share in Shelter Creek, overall, you're losing it in the rest of the city, and the churn rate essentially reinforces that. But we dove a little deeper into the churn rate, and I've got a graph here that is not confusing in the least. This is the churn that's due to competition from AT&amp;T. In Shelter Creek, it's been virtually nonexistent. Those little blips you see there are one person deciding to switch from San Bruno Cable to AT&amp;T. Over the course of two years, you had three people in Shelter Creek. That's, that's essentially nothing. That, that's just sort of the normal back and forth in any business. And you had a, a rate that wasn't much above that in the rest of the city until this past summer, and at, something happened in the marketplace, and staff tells me AT&amp;T finished a fiber upgrade, or at least started advertising a fiber upgrade. I don't know whether they've actually are providing direct fiber-to-the-home service to all their, all the locations. They have a, a range of products they call fiber, and some of them are fiber, but some of them are, are still copper-based, but there's, there's fiber somewhere in the system, so they call it fiber. But in any event, you have a marked increase in the number of people who are leaving San Bruno Cable and switching over to AT&amp;T service as AT&amp;T is rolling out fiber-to-the-home service in the city. So just to summarize, Shelter Creek has a much better revenue growth and market share growth than the rest of the, rest of the system. 13% year-over-year versus 3% in the rest of the system. Internet service, both in Shelter Creek and elsewhere in the service, is accounting for a greater and greater share of revenue, and that's, that's true generally in the industry. Your market share in Shelter Creek is rising, it's sliding in the rest of the city. Average revenue per customer is trending up in Shelter Creek, slightly down in the last few months in the rest of the system, flat to down. And you've seen significant improvements over the past two years in the, in the churn rate, in that, in that downward escalator that you have to fight against every month. You've seen significant improvements in Shelter Creek. So we asked ourselves, well, suppose you upgraded the entire city to fiber-to-the-home, and some, not necessarily all, but suppose some of the benefits, some of the improvements you've seen in Shelter Creek carried over into the rest of the city? And we ran a couple of, we ran a couple of scenarios. Once, and it, and the basic difference between the two scenarios is, is how does internet revenue increase in the rest of the city? Internet revenue in the rest, in Shelter Creek, since you finished the upgrade in August and you started billing people for the full service they were, were receiving, internet service revenue went up 11% between August and, August of 2017 and January, February, February of 2018, 11% increase. The TV revenue, as you saw in the, in the graph, it doesn't increase there, but you do, you are holding your own in Shelter Creek in terms of, in terms of revenue. The decline in TV revenue stopped. That is, that is just the simplest, the most cleanest comparison we can make, is to say, okay, you had 11% revenue increase since full fiber upgrade in Shelter Creek, let's make that same assumption for the rest of the city. Second scenario we run, we ran was basically to say, okay, let's say it's 20%, because it's still climbing in Shelter Creek, and since you began the fiber upgrade, just in the past year, you've seen a 30% rise in internet revenue in Shelter Creek. So a 20%, 20% is not too out of line, it's, it's more optimistic than 11%. It is more pessimistic than what you've actually experienced in Shelter Creek. Made a few other assumptions, that the cost of the fiber upgrade would be around $10 million. We assume pay-per-view revenue would hold steady, it has mostly. You can make an argument that, once you have a fiber upgrade, on-demand service revenue will rise, but that's, we just assumed it to be flat. We assumed that your interest rate is 4.5%. We didn't make any assumptions at all about where the money might come from, but if you go out and either borrow $10 million or take $10 million out of savings, or wherever you get it, we assumed the cost of that money would be 4, 4.5% a year. We ran the projections in constant dollars, we didn't make any assumptions about inflation. That just lets us make consistent comparisons over the years, and we assumed that there would be a certain amount of increased expense, because you're, if you're getting more revenue, you're providing more service, along with more service comes more expense. Arguably, you could see an expense, your expenses drop if you move to a full fiber system. You won't be supporting two separate systems. Staff has made some estimates as to what, what the lower cost of operations would be in a fiber system. We did not, we did not include that in the projections, mainly to be conservative. We also did not factor, didn't try to do an analysis of, of the various alternatives that are out there, principally an upgrade to what's called DOCSIS 3.1, but it's a, it's a, it's, it's the most current level of, of cable technology, conventional cable technology. That wasn't included in the analysis either. So anyway, we, we ran two separate analyses. Basic, the basic difference is, is the basic, the two basic assumptions are, internet revenue would increase, TV revenue, the decline in TV revenue that you're seeing citywide would flatten out after a couple of years, as it has in Shelter Creek. The result of that analysis, just running it out and applying the, the 4.5% discount rate, shows that if you assume a 20% citywide increase just in internet revenue, and the TV revenue, the slide in TV revenue more or less comes to a halt after a couple of years, if you assume an 11% increase, you get to payback in about 26, 27 years. If you assume a 20% increase, that payback comes at about year 14. The minimum, the minimum time, or I'm sorry, the minimum increase, revenue increase to get to payback within 30 years is a 10% increase. So if you just saw a 10% increase in internet revenue, you'd get to payback in 30 years. 30 years is usually considered to be the minimum lifespan of a fiber, fiber system. I think in reality, it's, the, the fiber itself will last much longer. Electronics need to be upgraded periodically, but that's also true of a cable system. Over time, you have to, you have to keep maintaining and, and replacing the electronics. So in, and it, so the bottom line in this is that you can get to payback citywide if you have the improvement in internet revenue citywide that you've seen in Shelter Creek just in the first eight months of full fiber operation. If you get to that in 20, in 27 years, if you assume that it's going to be kind of the midpoint of where your total revenue increase over the last year in Shelter Creek has been, you get, you get to payback in 14 years. So that is, that's my presentation. So that is, that's my presentation. If you have any questions, I'm here.
Questions from council? And I also want to see if we have people from the audience who may want to speak on this matter, but I'll ask council if they want to have any questions to start, or see if we have people from the community.
I'd like to hear if there's anybody from the community.
Anybody from the audience who wants to speak on this item?
Ryan Mercy, Keynes Avenue. I'd like to speak on, in support of upgrading to fiber. I understand it's an expensive system. I think it's going to be a vast improvement for our city and not only will it pay off in the future based on the analysis, but I think will be a great civic achievement for us as a city. Also, might I suggest ways to pay for, possibly borrowing money from ourselves, from the San Bruno Community Foundation and paying a lower interest rate, but to ourselves, possibly mortgaging the property that the cable building sits on now, or even selling it for development and moving that to a less expensive property. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else from the audience?
Counsel?
I'd like to hear from the subcommittee as well.
Okay. Maybe Irene can start? Irene, would both of you wish to? I know there wasn't a per se recommendation, because it's just receiving information, but would you like to add anything?
If you would, would you discuss a little bit about the risks involved in not doing anything?
The risk involved in not doing anything is right. This is the risk, this is the risk in not doing anything. That green line, that is on a downward trend, and if you want a single top-line headline reason for that, the reason it's going up in Shelter Creek is because people are buying more internet service and higher levels of internet service, whereas in the rest of the system, people are going to AT&amp;T. And that's, that's the risk of not doing anything. It's, your, your, your business, the metrics I'm seeing here have, your, your business metrics have significantly declined in the rest of the city over the past two years. And there's no reason to think that's going to change if nothing else changes.
Thank you.
Anything else, Irene?
I've long supported fiber-to-the-home, and I am excited about the possibility and the fact that we've done all the homework of this part of it. I know financing is going to be a huge factor in all this, but as he said, if we do nothing, the whole system is going to decline. We're going to be stuck with the debt that we already have with little chance of replacing it. And the citizens of San Bruno are going to be without our San Bruno Cable. And I think that alone makes us pause and think really hard about doing this or not. It's a fabulous system, our service is wonderful. I don't know of any other place in all the people I know who live all over the United States, that if you pick up the phone and say, ah, my, you know, my mother can't get her cable remote control to work, can you send somebody out to her that does it for free? And they're very patient, and they, they do it for anybody who asks. So that's one of our fabulous pieces of all this, is our service. And I don't think AT&amp;T would ever do anything like that. So that's my comments. I could answer other questions if you wish.
Michael?
The chair, thank you. So like Irene, I'm, I'm in favor of keeping our system going, and fiber is definitely the, the wave of the future. My concerns around what I'm seeing, and I raised this in the subcommittee meeting as well, is that the numbers to me that we're seeing are not that compelling. I mean, looking at the, at the churn rate right now, we're talking about half of a percent, 0.5% difference. And the, the number, our, our sample set in Shelter Creek is a very small number, it's very new. I asked, and unfortunately, we don't have data around demographics at Shelter Creek and how they compare to the rest of the city. So extrapolating the results there, I think is risky at best, because I believe that demographic may, and on top of them being sort of a, they're a little community of their own, they actually requested San Bruno Cable to bring fiber to them. So I would expect that their, their rate of onboarding would be dramatically higher than, than the rest of the population. So there, there's a number of reasons why those numbers, I think, are, would be skewed. And just looking at the increases, I don't believe that they're as dramatic as I would hope in this thing. And, and again, we're only looking at revenue in these things, not really looking at number of subscribers and cost per subscriber, which I think would provide a different dimension. So as you mentioned, a big portion of those revenue increases come from rate increases and the fact that they are consuming more expensive products there, so that naturally drives that, that number up. So if we were to correct for that, I think then, again, the numbers would be less dramatic. So I think one thing that we need to consider as a council, I want to, I want to speak to the council here, but I don't want to fall off the microphone. One thing we need to consider is that there's going to be a fundamental shift in our philosophy and how we, how we handle San Bruno Cable. Going back to its origins in 1969, it was really established as a source of revenue for the city. It was established for the purpose of contributing to the general fund and providing a service, yes, but also supplementing our, our operations, our other operations in the city, and allowing us not to have to raise taxes. And I believe that was something that was mentioned in the original, in the original text. But as we move into this, into modern times, it's obvious that $10 million deficit is there because the enterprise is no longer able to contribute to the city's revenue. And if we were to make this investment, it, I don't believe we, we would be able to sustain that revenue that we've always counted on. So the more we invest in San Bruno Cable, and based on the projections that I've seen, I don't think that, eventually, it's going to continue, it's going to continue to take away from the general fund if we have to keep investing in it. And at this point, I believe it's probably, you know, still breaking even, but the more we invest in it, the less that might be the case. So the, the funding source would be critical, depending on how we choose to fund it. I don't know that going forward, we definitely can't afford to fund it from general fund. We can't supplement it. So if it can't stand alone, then it really can't stand, I don't think. And another big issue that, that's a concern, and probably not really reflected here, is the fact that the enterprise is saddled with the television half, not the internet, but the television half, which is steadily declining, and we have very little control over the costs. Companies like Comcast, which control the transmission and the content that they push out, have a lot more control over that. We have to pay whatever they charge us per channel, and as our subscriber base grows, it grows disproportionately, because we have to pay each of these channels for every subscriber, whether or not they, they even watch the channel. So there's a whole other portion there that will continue to saddle the enterprise, and you know, we're not really addressing that. So this is a very sort of clean analysis, but I think that it's, it's a lot messier than that. So those are my thoughts. Again, I'm not, I'm not against doing it, I'm just really concerned that, you know, long-term, our, our ability to keep, keep this going is, is there. The competition is going to increase. AT, the threat from AT&amp;T, I think, will, will continue to take customers away, whether or not we do fiber. A lot of people view their internet connection as a commodity, and they really don't care who they get it from. And we'll see a lot of flip-flopping. People will go to AT&amp;T, realize that they don't have the service, and maybe some will come back, maybe some won't. But there's no, there's no guarantees there either. I think we've always seen the churn in the system. People leave, people come back, but there's no real guarantee that only having fiber will really keep us competitive. As the consultant mentioned, you know, AT&amp;T is also offering some hybrid system, and we alluded to the DOCSIS 3.1, which could be some sort of a hybrid system for us, so we're not looking at that. It would be a lower-cost system. So I think if we want to make an investment, it would be prudent to look at that option as well, and not just put all our eggs in the fiber basket. So that's it.
Marty Delore, you have anything to add? Marty?
I think I need a little clarification, because I have a different understanding of how our funds from cable was supplementing and, and going to the general fund, that it, it, it isn't a drawdown on the general fund, it actually was providing funds to the city. It was just that, as that amount remained the same, and we weren't investing in our, currently, we're not, we haven't been keeping up with our competition, it's clear that the future is either you're going to compete, or you're going to be out of business. The only way to compete is to put in the fiber. That's my take on it. And I was hoping that, and I liked all, all of Michael's points, just that I, I think the fiber, San Bruno Cable is profitable, just that so much of that money was being, being allocated to the general fund. And I think that's really important, and I was hoping that our finance director or somebody else from staff can just provide some, the narrative on that to explain that it is a revenue generator, it's just that a lot of that money was, was going to the, to the general fund, and to explain how that worked out. I think that's critical for, for us and for the public to understand that. I understand that tonight, we're at one first step before we do a comprehensive financial analysis on what it's going to take to really run San Bruno Cable more aggressively as a competing business in San Bruno. It comes down to either we, we advance with technology, or we're, we're going to be out of business. And then what? As we continually start losing customers? So is that possible, Mayor, to have, or somebody from staff to provide some comments? Yes?
City manager?
So I can give you a, a general summary, and I think what I would suggest is that you task us with bringing back a more detailed response to that question, but the council member is correct. They, in very general terms, the cable enterprise has been tasked since its inception with a transfer of revenues off the top, gross revenues, into the general fund. That amount might, in a private business, be considered owner's equity or something like that. And I think that was part of the original thought process when that, when, when that structure was developed back at the inception of the enterprise. Over the last three to four years, since the deficit has reached the approximate $10 million mark, that equity transfer amount has been reduced in, in each year. I, I'd like, again, to have the opportunity to bring this back to you in a little bit more detail, so we get the numbers precise. But we are no longer transferring 10% of gross revenues, we're transferring a significantly lower amount. But in very general terms, our analysis done a couple of years ago demonstrated that the amounts of transfers into the general fund over the approximate 10- or 12-year period over which the deficit emerged and then grew, the amounts that were transferred into the general fund, above and beyond, in a, I'll say, for council, for clarity, to the city council, the city does provide a fairly robust number of services to the cable enterprise, just as we do to the water enterprise and to the sewer enterprise. Financial management, facility management in some cases, human resources management, those services are covered through other transfers. So there, so the enterprise does pay the general fund for services rendered, and this additional amount was transferred from the general fund. Over time, the amounts transferred into the general fund roughly equate to the, over a, in a, over the period of time that the deficit emerged, roughly equate to the amount of the deficit cumulatively. So at the city council's initiative, we have incrementally backed off of the amounts that are currently being transferred, and there is still an amount being transferred. But we could, we can show the city council that, that information in, in more detail. We're not prepared to do that tonight. In general terms, the comments that, that you made are relatively correct, yes.
Thank you. So I'm in favor of moving forward, and I strongly suggest we move swiftly. This is one of the most, one of the most important things I think we can do in, in making sure we steady this, this trajectory and start getting it backed up, is to, is to invest in the technology. I mean, that's the way it always is, is that either you, you, you advance or you fall back. And, and I want, I want to be, I want to be with advancing.
Laura?
Thank you. First of all, thank you so much for a thorough report. I appreciate the details that you provided in that report. And I echo some of the council members as well, and that is that we have to do something. We can't continue the status quo. You know, to simplify it, it's, we've got a sinking ship, and we're, you know, buckets of water is getting dumped out of it while we're trying to make repairs over here. And although it sounds great, we've got to make a choice. You know, we either get, buy a new ship and move on, or we've, we've got to, we've got to do something. So, but with that comes a lot of concerns. I echo council member Salazar's comments in that it is a small sampling of a group of residents in a very, it's, it's not, it's not the typical residential area in San Bruno either. It's condos, it's in a very tight community, communication, advertisement, very easy, knocking on doors, dropping off door, I mean, to get out to the residents is pretty easy in terms of communication. And they want, they were interested and they wanted it. So that's, there's a couple pieces there. I'm also concerned with the flat decline in television viewers. The reality is, is that we are changing how we view television media today. Nobody really sits and just watches TV anymore. It's, we're on iPads, we're on computers, we're streaming, we're downloading. The service we provided 10, 20, and 30 years ago is going away. And, and we've also been dealt with the challenges of, of like, comments were made too, is, is television, you know, buying those channels at, at rates that, you know, contracts and renewing, and the unknown cost in ABC and NBC and all these channels, the unknown, it's actually kind of a scary business to continue to stay in. I'm definitely in favor of researching the potential for rolling out a fiber system in San Bruno, because that seems to be a really a win-win, right? It is the technology. We all walk around with these minimal, mini-computers, the iPhones and the Androids. It's what we want to do, right? You know, the flat-screen televisions are all internet, right? No longer will you see cable cords going into a television. You stick up, you know, it provides power, and voila, you're Wi-Fi watching anything you want to watch, right? So that service, there's high demand. You know, the kids today want to stream, they're on videos, and internet is by far the direction that I think our residents are going. the direction that I think our residents are going. So, I think providing a good service, there is something to the fact that we have our own company in San Bruno and that we can go down there and walk in as a resident and get good service, that you can call them and get an appointment and not take the entire day off. I mean, we far sell, I believe, the cable service that we offer in San Bruno, that we really don't push the great service that we provide. I recently switched over to AT&amp;T just to be an AT&amp;T customer because I had forever been a San Bruno Cable customer, to see what kind of services. And I experienced, a couple weekends ago, being sick over a few days, horrible service. I will tell you, I had video problems all weekend long on many occasions. Never had that with my cable. So, you know, San Bruno Cable has provided a great service, good customer service. You can get appointments. We have a great thing in San Bruno. I would hate to lose that. And I think if we crunch the numbers, we have been profitable. Yes, profits have declined over the years, but I think we can even do better. I think that getting the right staff in hired for the cable, investing in a good program, I think, I see, I see the light. I do see something. We can't do nothing. And I think like Councilmember Vardina said, this is a priority. This is something that really needs to get our focus because doing nothing is, you know, continuing to decline in viewership and customers. So, those are my comments.
Is it possible to get out of your AT&amp;T contract?
Of course, I will be. It's only a two-year commitment. Yeah.
I guess, I have a few comments, is, maybe because I'm sitting in the center now, I share everybody's comments. I do think the sampling, when we really talk about it, it is a very unique situation. It is a, Shelter Creek that came to us and said, please do this, if not, we're going to have to go here, but we will stand by, we will wait for you. That doesn't happen a lot in the marketing world. It just doesn't. We had their manager on site, Ronnie, who was just pushing this and through the board. And so, we just had elements of marketing that you just don't get throughout the community. That's a reality. You know, it is, it is talking about a shift because, in essence, we have other enterprise funds that have to, even with the rates and what have you, is they validate and they support those enterprises. This has not occurred. And to my knowledge, Michael, you're correct, it was established and started in order to help offset and minimize overall residential costs to the community. That was its intent. And it was its intent, of course, and I stood there, a city employee, when we dedicated the cable department. I was there as a city employee in that department, but when they redid the system. What I've always said is, we should be treating that like we do with the other aspects of, like, our vehicles, equipment reserve. We're not putting reserves away in order to replace those pieces of very expensive equipment at times as we used to. And we're going to get yourselves behind, and then you go into debt. So, I think it has to be a very big shift if you even go down that. Are you looking for those supplements that have been going in the general fund to discontinue? That how does the general fund take care of that? So, I think it's not as quick and simple as let's hit a button and go. In my world, I think it really has to be looked at. The funding source is critical. I know that you're averaging about a 4.5 interest rate is what the suggestion was, you know, but how do we do it? I think what I'm hearing from the council is that, obviously, we really need to take a deeper dive, and I think we need the analysis and the hard questions to get a true fact and history of what the cable department was established, what it has been doing, and how do we look at this? Because if we're going to stop the additional monies to the general fund, though it is going in debt, and we're already minimizing that, and we have, this council has taken that action to do that. But I think you're going to have to look at it also more in the channel aspect. I think one of the things I've noticed as I've campaigned, and I can tell you, and I've been up here a little bit now, but when I would walk the streets in '05 to this last race for mayor, it is night and day as far as cable TV subscribers. There are dishes everywhere. There's the AT&amp;T fiber. So, you know, is the whole package what we need to stay with? Is it viable? And I think I want us to make sure we're really taking a good cross-section of the community and to say, will we find those revenue results that we're actually going off on Shelter Creek? If we saw those also at Crystal Springs Terrace, if we saw those at Peninsula Place, that's fine. Are we going to see that when we start to go into other pockets of a community? That I don't know. And I think that's what I want to be more secured on, because whatever this council chooses to do, I think we're going to find criticism for going more in debt. We could find criticism for not doing anything, and we could find criticisms as if, as Councilwoman Salazar said, can we stand? So, in essence, it's not a simple question of, is it good? Well, of course it is. But there's a lot of other, I think, global things we need to look at in order to ensure it's the right future for the city, the system, and us providing all the other services that we do. So, those are my comments.
Through the Chair. So, I think what we're all saying is that, and it sounds like there's a consensus, that we want to do something and we're very interested in going down this path. But I think you're right, and that is, we need to get a good analysis of cable in its entirety. Where we're at today, can't do nothing, but we need to know that and what the facts are. And I'd like to see the analysis from, stat report from staff on the monies.
So, what I hear, unless the council wants to say more comments, that we would like to see staff come back with the analysis. Michael might want to add a little more broader perspective to that.
Through to the Chair, thank you. The only thing I would add is that when we start looking at funding options, that we keep a very global view of all of the other deficits that we have in the city. Marty made an issue last time about not having enough money to put up light poles. I know our streets are dramatically underfunded, our storm sewers are dramatically underfunded. So, as we look forward and as we start taking some strategic actions to fund some of these things that need to get done, basic things that we as a city are responsible for, I want to make sure that we don't overextend ourselves in one area at the peril of everything else. So, that would be my only request.
Can I play that okay, or Irene?
Well, I'd just like to make the comment and clarification that cable, the point of, part of the point of all this is that cable TV, cable, which we probably shouldn't call it TV anymore, but cable, San Bruno Cable is a revenue-generated entity, whereas the street lights and the sidewalk replacements and all those stuff, those come from other funds or they are, they don't generate any revenue. So, you can't, I wouldn't want to ask staff to compare apples and oranges. If you, if we have funding mechanisms or there's a wide variety of different ways to fund the cable enterprise and the fiber optic, then I think that's the information we need. I don't necessarily think we need a comparison between not being able to fund street lights and not doing cable. I mean, I think they're just totally different types of things. And if you, however you fund cable, that's an obligation that comes back to cable. It's not something that you, you don't charge somebody who doesn't have cable to help pay for cable. It's separate.
Well, two points. For everything that we do, we're reaching into the pockets of either the ratepayers or the taxpayers. That's the only source of income that we have. So, it's either going to be a ratepayer, and in a lot of cases, they're the same people. So, the people of San Bruno are going to pay for it one way or another. The other point is that the city's credit rating is going to be impacted by whatever debt we take on, whether it's on the cable side. And actually looking at the amount of debt that the cable enterprise is carrying, we would probably be wiser to borrow the money from the general fund, on the general fund side, with the city's credit rating, rather than try to do it from the cable enterprise's weaker position. So, I think all of those things, they all bear out. I mean, if we start overextending ourselves, we become less attractive as a borrower to the markets. And so, if we do extend ourselves $10 million to do this, that may impact our ability to raise funds, to do something else, something different.
Irene, please.
Oh, okay. I understand what you're saying, and I think it's commendable that what you are saying, and it's certainly prudent to do that. I think what, maybe a different way of saying it is, let's ask staff to come back with as many ways of funding fiber to the home as throughout the city as possible, and then we can analyze them and which is the most feasible and which is the best way to go and get their recommendation, and then come back with the caveat that they keep all those things in mind that you said. But the other piece is, people are going, the ratepayers aren't just paying for, you know, paying, it's, they're getting a service in return. It's not like they're just throwing money out. They're getting a service. And if they don't want the service, they don't pay for it. But if we don't have the service to offer, we're certainly not going to be able to pay for anything, anything related to cable. So, just keep in mind that if we do nothing, our revenue is going to continue to go down, and we will have less and less opportunity to repay the debt that we do currently have. So, that's just a cautionary note that way.
Marty?
Can we get a little update on how everything's going over at Peninsula Place with our next phase of expansion of fiber, so that can, we can kind of have an idea of how well things are going?
Isn't that funny? We didn't even say, come on up, and boy, that was quick. You heard fiber, you were at the podium.
And we didn't practice this either, so.
No, I was going to say.
Mr. Johnson through the chair.
Mr. Johnson through the chair, is that okay? Go ahead, sir.
Thank you. Is it my con?
Absolutely, for you, of course.
Okay. Yeah, Peninsula Place is going quite well. By the end of next week, we'll have all 48 buildings wired up, ready to go for transfer to fiber to the home. We have over, we have, today I counted up about 150 transfers that are on fiber to the home out of the 840 units in Peninsula Place. So, by, within two months, we'll be finished with Peninsula Place, I figure, because we'll be strictly working on hooking up customers after next week. And next week, the underground people are going to start looking at Crystal Springs. So, we're starting that project, which is 447 customers. And, you know, for the $2 million that you authorized us to do, we're going to get, right now, we have 1,000 customers, we'll probably get close to 600 or 700 out of Peninsula Place. And we already have in Crystal Springs over 300 connect, penetration is there's high. We just want to build that so we maintain our penetration there so AT&amp;T will not come in there and overbuild. So, it's going quite well.
Okay, with that, from the council, what I'm hearing is to go forward on some of the analysis to that, and you've heard some of the dialogue and discussion from council as for some of the areas of interest and/or concern. I would think when this comes back, I don't know if it should go to the subcommittee, but I would think a study session would probably be the most appropriate next forum so that we can spend the more relaxed opportunity but quality time on this topic. And I think this is something that probably, my first inclination is not a 50-minute, hour study session. I think it probably requires a good hour and a half or something, just to make sure that we have adequate time to converse and go over facts and figures. Does that give staff? City Manager, are you feel comfortable with direction?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.